Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session Meeting for November the fifth, sixteen. I'm probably meeting the board. The present are Darryl Baker, County Attorney, Terry Matthews, President, Charles Vance, Commissioner, D. Jackson. We need to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission Meeting that was held on October fifteenth, two thousand, October fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at sixteen. I'll second that. All is in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Motion carries. Let's go here and say, to approve the minutes of the special session of the Lincoln County Commission Meeting that was held on October twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, five-fifteenth AM. You further the discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That being unanimous, we're going to move to public comment. Rick Roberts, I don't know if you can stand up and introduce yourself. This is the engineer for the Lower Mud River Water Project. He's with E.L. Rockson. And I have asked him to come to speak today and to talk about how much money we have, how much money that we need, and our timeline. And I think we have a lot of people, and I'm probably going to go out here so I can see, I want to, you know, want to know how things are going. So, you want to...
First off, I brought a little map here so you can sort of see what the project looks like. I'm going to stick it right there and try, I think it'll stay upright. As you know, the county and the public service district's been working for years, several years on what we call the Lower Mud River Water Project. And it starts down here, the nine-one-one zone's right here, goes up, you've got straight fork, big buffalo, little buffalo, and goes up to right here along County Route One. There's a total of about a hundred and sixty-four customers in that area. The county had put, the county commission had put some money toward that to get the project started. The RUS, the Rural Utility Services, well, first off, well, the Rural Utility Services, that's what used to be the Farmer's Home Administration, put their initial, initially they put a grant of eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand into the project and with a loan of four-hundred-and-one-thousand. Then we were able to get the Army Corps of Engineers to commit five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand to it, and at the same time, in order to match that, it's a seventy-five-twenty-five percent match, the county commission increased their contribution to a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, which matched the Corps of Engineers. Then, I think two years ago, the Rural Utilities, or about a year and a half ago, Rural Utility Services, RUS, indicated that they were willing to put some additional money into the project under the stipulation that something had to be built, you know. So what they did was they gave an additional grant to the project of one million and ninety-nine-thousand dollars. But in order for something to be built, we looked at it as a phased concept, which is phase one and a phase two. The phase one project goes from the industrial park, there's a regulator there, there's a tank, tank right here to serve the whole area, but the phase one went to about here, which cut off the upper part of Buffalo Creek and everything this way, and then phase two was supposed to come in and finish the rest of it. In order to get even the phase one project underway, we still needed a small city block grant of a million and a half dollars. And that was applied for by the county over, I think, two consecutive years, and they've been turned down, and there's still, right now, there's a grant application for a million and a half dollars to the small cities folks for phase one. In the meantime, about a year ago, we were contacted by the Development Office and the Office of Emergency Services or Homeland Security, whatever you want to call it, and they were going to go after a federal pool of money in what they called the nat- nat- natural disaster resiliency competition. And that was, depending on who you talked to, about eight-hundred million to a billion dollars nationwide. So we submitted, I think, five projects in Lincoln County for consideration in that. It passed through the step one review, and the state was invited to submit a step-two application. The Lower Mud River Project was also selected for the step-two application, which was submitted by the state to the federal people on October twenty-seventh. What they're saying is for an announcement of whether or not we're successful in getting that in December or January, in other words, late this year or early next year. The small cities application for phase one is also sort of a December or January announcement, it varies from year to year. The great thing about the natural disaster resiliency competition is, is they agreed to put enough money in there to do the whole project at once. So you've got, you've got two scenarios floating out there. One is, with the money we already have, if we get the additional one-point-five-million dollars from the small cities block grant, we can do phase one only, and we'll have to reapply for additional monies to do phase two. The other scenario is, is with the money we already have, the, this federal money, this national disaster resiliency competition money, if we get it, it's about three-point-two-million dollars, and that'll give us enough money to build the whole thing at once. But the problem is, is we aren't going to know about that until December or January, is what they're telling us. There's no guarantees, everybody feels good about the grant application, I know the county's got positive feedback on it, but it's, it's the, on one hand, it's the governor's decision, on the other hand, it's a federal decision, but you are in the running for two different ways to do this. It's about, I mean, that's the summary of it all.
So, once you get, we say that this thing gets the federal grant, what's the timeline after that?
The project has already been designed, we've gotten some of the permits, some of the permits are time-sensitive, and you can't get too far ahead of time, so there's some additional permits to get, there'll be right-ofways to get, a tank site and a PRB site to get, there's some of that sort of stuff that needs done. So if you get word, say, in January, I would say in two or three months, you could be ready to submit to the Public Service Commission, they have a four-to-six-month review period, so you're looking at having everything ready to bid, you know, mid to late next year.
We'll be dead by then.
I hope not.
Yeah, we are too, there's too much disease in our family right now. And I'd like to say something myself when we get through.
Does anyone else have any more questions for Rick?
One of the questions that came up the other night, when we approved the resiliency grant application, was, when do they start paying tax fees? I didn't know what, where we're at in that process.
Right, that's normally up to the public service district, but it would, shortly after we're notified, that process could begin. And there's a few of these where some of these branch lines only serve two or three houses, and, you know, it's possible that if no one there wants the water, that, you know, some of those might be deleted from the job, but, you know, the intention is to serve everybody that wants water with water if we get that national money.
Is that a move going to go to Mud River Two, the line?
You mean to some of these...
People live on opposite rivers.
Well, if you'll notice here, Mud River's actually on the, on your right-hand side, and, you know, we've got crossings at various places across Mud River, they have to be done via directional bore because there's some endangered mussels, or the possibility that there's endangered mussels, you know, so they're actually going to drill under it, probably since I've done, like they do a gas line or something, we're going to do the crossings that way.
So, do you feel pretty good about this? I mean, you feel, how do you feel?
Everything, everything I'm, everything I'm hearing, it sounds pretty good, but, I mean, you know, it's DC right now, and I would be the last person to try to predict what the federal people will do.
Have all these other people have already gotten water, have they got these national grants too?
This nat- national disaster resiliency competition is a brand-new thing. This is the first, well, this, this application here is for the first projects of their kind in the state, so. The answer, I guess, is no.
None. Will county commission get the money, or will the government take care of that issue?
Well, it's going, it's going to be processed through the West Virginia Development Office. I believe that the county did a, like a cooperating agreement or something, you know better than that what, what the regional council brought down here, but it's going to be run through the Development Office, which is an arm of the state government.
They see the funds go somewhere else.
Well, if they're, if you get money for Lower Mud River, it's going to go toward Lower Mud River. Now, there's also thirteen other projects in the state that may also get money, but if you get money for Lower Mud River, it will be used for Lower Mud River.
Thanks, Rick.
You're welcome.
Hey, Rick, you have your phone number available in case anyone would like to talk to you or give you a call, like some of these, you know, people who want...
My office number is, of course, three oh four, seven seven six, seven four, seven three.
Same four, what?
Seven seven six, seven four, seven three.
Did everybody get that? Thanks, Rick.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, uh, no, I won't. This here, I went and got the, that, 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 I don't know if I've seen it here. This here...
You probably want to show that to Rick.
I got the whole, I got the whole line, I got about three copies of it. Twenty-ten, this should have been started between twenty-ten and twenty-twelve, it's right here. And this paper, I'm, did I give you that paper?
Yeah, well, I know I looked at it when we were here the other time.
Well, it tells here, it's twenty, April the nineteenth of twenty-ten, and it tells about Lower Mud River, it said, beginning date, project period, fourth month, the first day of ten, to the twelfth, the nineteenth, and thirty-first of twelve, a date of application, second month, the twenty-fifth of twenty-ten, and it tells all the grants, there's four million and sixty thousand dollars, there's one million and five-hundred thousand dollars, four-hundred thousand dollars, and a, and a million. And it says six million and sixty thousand dollars. Now, it's got, it said proceed with application, and it says Michelle Craig, and she signed as the third month and the fourth day of ten. So I want to know if those are grants or costs or...
I think Rick could answer this question.
This lady happened, she, she actually showed me that before.
What?
What she's reading from is the intergovernmental review approval, where the project was submitted to the Region Two Planning and Development Council, who circulated it, you know, through, through the Region Two area. That is, was done as part of the environmental review, where the application was submitted to the Rural Utility Services, and it was a projected funding scenario, the actual current funding scenario is much different from what that is. I mean, you, you get a projected funding scenario and start making applications for the money, and then you sort of have to roll with the punches to get what you can get, which is, you know, the RUS, the Corps of Engineers, the county commission, and now either a small cities or...
I think that was the misunderstanding, was that she felt that this had already been approved versus it was an application to get...
This, this six million's not right.
That, that's why we were talking about that.
That, that's what the amount was back then, but all that is, is approval by the region to, to make applications for that money.
So y'all didn't get this much money? Y'all didn't get all that?
No, we don't have that much yet, I read off to you what we had.
So, did y'all have that much money?
Never had that much, that's just approval to, to make the application.
Well, then I have one here, it says, uh, March the tenth of twenty-ten, and it says, the State Cleanhouse has reviewed Lincoln Public Service District request of U.S. Department of Agriculture and Rural Utilities, four million and four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, right there. And then I have this letter from the Public Service Commission, and he wrote me a letter, I got it from him, it's a mail, whoever this, whoever this is, and, and they said they were going to do a survey. See, if we, if people, if, if y'all had made sure we had a survey of who wanted water and who didn't, and, and who, and paid the tax fee, we never been to come over and pay the tax fee, we've never been surveyed down here or nothing, so why, everybody else has done that way, they're the ones getting water, and we're not, why don't, why is that not, we've not been doing that to them like that?
Ma'am, everything you're reading off of...
This is from the, this is from the...
Well, but the public service... Can let him...
The public service commission's only involvement in this will be when the district files a certificate for, they basically have to get a permit from the public service.
David L. Accord, the second director, is that...
But their only involvement, that was through some sort of, of political letter or something was sent in that they responded to, their involvement will be essentially to get a permit from them.
And what about this? Do we have that one million though, that Ray Hall...
Well, that Congressman Ray Hall, normally they announce any federal money that's attached to the project, and as I read off before, there've been three occasions when the project has gotten federal money, all of which is available for the project.
You got a total of about...
Well, you'll have to add it up. Right now, we have a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand from the county, five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, then we have two grants from the Rural Utility Services.
You don't have that in your pocket, do you?
No, no, you, no, after, after you incurred the cost, you submitted to them, you know, and draw it down to pay your bills with. It's not in your pocket, but it is committed.
It will be there.
Yeah, it will be there, it's committed, but it's not, I mean, we just can't, I mean, they don't have it in a bank account.
That's just like all this other stuff, I mean, when they put that out there, they all say it's an estimate or something like that instead of, you know...
What about when Jennifer asked Mr. Matthews for how much we had, and it said three million and seventy-nine thousand?
Well, if you'll let me give you the rest of these numbers, they may, they may add up to that.
Well, they add up around here.
There was an eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar grant from RUS, and then later there was a one-million-ninety-nine-thousand-dollar grant from RUS, and there's also a committed loan from RUS for four-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars. Now, if we proceed with phase one only, we still need a million and a half, which has applications pending with the small cities. If we proceed with the entire project at one time, we need three-point-two-million dollars, which we have applications into the federal people for that natural disaster money. So that's, I mean, you, you, if you added that up, that's how much is committed right now.
What is five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars on...
That's the Corps of Engineers.
Rick?
And a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand.
Thank you for coming, I really appreciate, really appreciate you coming.
Where's the million that Ray Hall brought?
It's probably, whatever the date was, when was the date?
I can't find it, it's got here just now.
It was probably that million ninety-nine thousand.
There's no date on it, because I cut it out of tape, and there was...
See, he, Ray Hall could possibly have announced the five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand because that three-forty program that came from was his baby, so to speak, and he had a great deal of input, and he got that money. The first round of RUS funding, which was the eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine or whatever, and the four-hundred-and-one-thousand-dollar loan, is federal money, he may have announced it, or he may have announced, or probably did announce, the one-million-ninety-nine-thousand on the second round of RUS money, so it could be, if it's a million dollars, it's got to be, you know, the RUS.
Thank you.
He stayed in there about for Lower Mud River, you know, of course, it might have been something else come out of it, but his office could probably tell you where the million dollars were spent on them.
Well, had it been spent, it's just a bit.
All right, we're going to move on with this, I think that we...
I'd like to do one more.
If, if, we're going to ask any more questions, you can, y'all can go out there and ask, we have to continue with our agenda.
Well, I, I want to, uh...
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, we're going to continue, if you want to ask more questions, and you, Rick can answer your questions out there.
I'm going to go and ask you the questions.
All right. David, will you please come up and talk about regarding the county cleanup? You're not coming up.
Uh, first page comes here, it's the two thousand fourteen...
Say what you mean.
It was a hard call.
Two thousand fourteen cleanup we did with the dumpsters throughout the county, and just to tell you, like, very hard, how many dumpsters we had and the tons that we collected at each of these sites down through there, to see the total of tons that we got throughout the county, the cost that county commission put for it, and then the cost of the solid waste, and then the total we spent in two thousand fourteen. This year, on the next payday, we have done those first five, did you see that, Heart Ranger, and FEDs, that's the first time for that, instead of branch lines here, we did FEDs, and that was a huge success of a, of a... And we've done those five, so far ninety-eight tons up there, and then you can see what we have spent so far. The bottom four there are candy, well, we just done Griftsville with all, we're doing Garrett Bend and Allen Creek this weekend, and that'll wrap it up for the year.
So you're going to do, you want to do Garrett Bend and Allen Creek?
Same day, this Saturday.
Same day? Okay. This Saturday?
This Saturday, the seventh.
We'll advertise that.
It's in the paper.
It's in the paper, we, we always run it a couple weeks prior to the event. Now, the reason I'm bringing this to you really is, my understanding at this point, they're not going to allow us to ask for a grant for this next year through D and P. We're still trying to get all the reasons as to why not, but what we're hearing is, they're limiting to a certain amount of county staff on this particular fund. But I assure you, you know, we'll try to get grant money wherever we can or whatever, but I just wanted to give you a heads up in case, you know, we need to come and ask for a little additional money when we get rid of the budget, for Red Fly sixteen, if we want to continue this program yet, in fact, we cannot get the grant money we need. And, of course, that'll be later on, you know, when I come in, but I just wanted to give you a heads up where we're at and what we're looking at.
Is that grant a rotating cycle?
Annual, annual grant that we're able to apply for.
What year?
But...
You thought it was last year?
Yes, and we just had a meeting up at the Canadian Valley on this, and Peter LePercy and I don't think we're going to be able to apply for it, but we'll see, you know, that's not possible yet, I just wanted to give y'all a heads up in case that does happen. The electronic cleanup event that we just had over the high school, computers, TVs, all that, we do that once a year, we just finished that, and we collected a little over twenty-nine thousand pounds of computers and TVs and all of that. That's it.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. Door's shut? You with the solid waste, update?
Uh, yes, I want to, first of all, I want to thank the commission for allowing me to go to this educational conference. I always come back this time of the year. We'll get into that in a few minutes. And we're all adults in this room, so I don't think I need to apologize for my language. We had a speaker at the conference, but the name is Erica Oliver. She's written a book about how to unleash the power of positive assumptions. The book came about because a friend of hers was overwhelmed by things that were happening in her life, she quoted it, it was just a bunch of crap, so she was having to go through. So Erica said to her, if you're going to have crap, make a happy crap. So she was an extremely good motivational speaker, and I hope to be one another time soon. Now, she talks about the thoughts for prosperity, production, and peace, and the one thing on the back of the book right here, it's called, give yourself the gift of more time, have your time and no more time wasted on negative crap. And if you stop and think about it, if you're going home tonight, you're probably sitting in a car, and, you know, you're, you might, usually your mind's not blank, you're thinking about something, so think about something that's going through your life and try to make it have crap instead of, instead of crap. You know, she, she was really, just, she had, you know, that was, she was one of the best speakers we've had in a long time.
I'm on board.
I'm sorry?
I'm on board with you.
Uh, you know, but I wish I could have got enough to bring all of you one, but, you know, I always come bearing gifts. With that, with that in mind. I'm sorry, Sean, I couldn't get that.
That's, that's all.
Thank you.
I had to swipe these off the table as well.
I appreciate it.
You know, they, they have people that don't show up, and I went over and got to grab a bunch of them, and some guy came over and he said, you want another? And I said, yeah, so he went over and he got me another one, so that's why I'm short one.
Oh, I hit one, yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, Sean, I couldn't get you. And Martin asked me to give this to you.
Yes, thank you.
But it, it was a pretty good conference, the Walt Helmick, the agriculture commissioner was able to speak, and, and of all the speakers I've heard, he was probably the best because his speech didn't host in about five minutes.
Thanks, Ms. Shore. All right, we're going to discussion concerns, we have Frank Moore Road, Phoebe?
Oh, yes. I don't know, it's been a few meetings back, a couple months ago, some citizens were here from the legal standpoint, or whether petition about that road. So we did some calling around, and I talked to a couple different people, and come to find out, that road is on the state road map. So, but it's been blacktopped by the state road, but they said it has never been on any state road map.
And it doesn't show it, ma'am?
Does not show that it was ever blacktopped at any time, but it clearly has been. So now they're saying they, technically, I guess, they don't have to do anything with it, of course, it's not there on their system. So, that's why I wouldn't put this on here, I mean, I've talked to everybody, this is what I've been aware of, so I think the only thing we can do after talking and thinking about it, is, you know, I'm asking that we write a letter from the commission petitioning the state, the Department of Highway to pick it up on the state road, and I think that's, do you all...
I'll move it. I'll second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
And it's unanimous, the motion carries. Awesome. Thanks, Phoebe. Next on the agenda is the jail bill. I think this is one of the things, it's been a rub, it's kind of been a rub in my craw for a long time, and the reason I say that is because we budget close to six-hundred-thousand dollars a year for the regional jail bill, and it, it really, it eats up our coffers, and we've, and Doc can back me up on this, that we've always paid this out of our coal settlements. Coal settlements is so loved that if we don't do something about it, it's going to start affecting our general county budget, and that's not good. So, looking at the jail bill and how the jail bill is broken down, anytime the state police takes someone to jail, or the county, the deputies, or maybe the town of Hamlet, that takes somebody to jail, we get the bill for the entire law, okay? And I would like to, maybe, I wanted to kick this around with it, you know, with these guys, and maybe send it up to Gay Park and let him see if, if we can legally do this, but I feel like that if our deputies take someone to jail, then it's our responsibility to pay for that. If the state takes, if they take someone to jail, it shouldn't be the county's responsibility to pay for the state. The state has gave us some... The state has gave us, has given us a mandate and we're not going to be able to fulfill it. And I'm not just talking about Lincoln County. This is all over the state of West Virginia and something has to be done by the state legislature for them to pay their fair share. And that's what it's about. Like if we would break down the regional jail bill for this month, I believe it is, or I should say, sixty thousand dollars, okay? And the county's share of that is around fifteen. So we are absorbing the state's cost and we, and I feel like that we need to look, you know, have Gaypart look at it and if there is any way that we can, I say that we pay for our, our, we pay for our deputies, the people that they arrest and take to jail and we let the state pay for theirs.
So, uh, do you want that form of motion to send a letter to Gaypart asking his professional opinion as to whether we can do that or not?
Yeah, let's do that.
I'll, I'll make that decision.
Can we put a timeline on it? Like, you know, see if he could do it and get to it in the next maybe two weeks so that we could maybe look at it at the next meeting?
We can get that transmission.
Yeah. Okay. Second that, always in favor, please say aye. Aye, unanimous, the passage. Thank you so much. Um, next on here, we have lower Mud River water, possible bottled water and the engineer did come.
Right, and it's, and I think you need to direct that question as far as making available water to these people to the PSD over there. So when we get one of them here, I think we need to ask them, on the run of the season, we need to ask them, because I know they're under constraints as far as how they can provide water to people through the PSD, so some stuff that they can do, but this was one of the questions that was brought up by one of the people at the meeting after, that was after the meeting the other night, was whether there was anything available. And I know they, they used to have areas over, uh, Allen Creek where they can get water over there, metered water, things of that nature. So that, when we see the council, those people, we need to ask them if there's anything this way that can be made available to those people down there to get these projects finished.
I think there is a tap. Well, they call it runoff, but...
There's a tap out here.
There's a runoff, the dees and that. They still have the runoff up here at the church?
Well, I was out here at their park, at Wuppin' Hare time.
Is it like a meter thing or not?
No.
See, I, I think that was a question that come up before.
Down there, upper Mud River Road. No, they didn't have a major time to be Wuppin' Hare time.
Uh, well, I tell you, since we got this on, why don't we just, I, I'm going to make a motion, we go ahead and send to the, uh, Lincoln, uh, PSD the, uh, request that the people have as far as what, what they can do as far as getting, uh, potable water. And that way, if there's a charge or whatever, they can bring that to their attention and where to get it at and things like that. And, and I know there may not be, but I'm just, there was some question about that at the PSD over at Allen Creek, how it was done and things of that nature. And I think that's something PSD needs to address and, and that way, but I do think they need to, and if we send that letter, uh, to them and, and that way we can let these people know what they tell us about how to handle that situation.
So I'll move to send a letter to the Lincoln PSD. Any further discussion? Always in favor, please say aye. Aye? If you're unanimous, the motion carries. Next word, unfinished business. We have the unfinished business.
Oh, sorry. No, no, sorry, I'm on the next one.
All right, then we have new business. You have something to say?
Yeah, the last page, page four.
Okay.
I have the resignation of Rick's partner, October twenty ninth. Technically his letter said to October thirty first, so I didn't want to...
So what do we say, August?
Just change, yeah, we can just change that to the thirty first.
Okay. Here, if you all have that changed? All right. Do I have any questions? If there's not any questions, I'm looking motion to approve the new business with the change.
Awesome, Dave.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Always in favor, please say aye. Aye, if that's unanimous, the motion carries. Listen, do you all have anything?
Yeah, there's a couple of things I was going to say. We found out yesterday, I kind of wanted to put it on record, that we did not get our courthouse facility grant. We were kind of, so that was not good. We'll apply again next year and see the courthouse facility grant that we applied for, we did not get it. So, but I talked to Alan Holder before I came into the meeting and Tyler is at Yawkey and they started seventy feet up and the building's going to be there tomorrow.
It's good news. Jonathan Brown? Hey, I just want to tell you guys, I really appreciate you. This is, uh, it's difficult whenever you have people coming in, they're trying to understand what's going on and, uh, appreciate you all and give the help and everything that happened. Just, just want to wish you luck. Hey, I don't have anything else. I move that we adjourn until, we need to set a time.
Let's just, let's do it at six.
Six o'clock on the nineteenth. Is that okay?
KK has to work and so...
What are we doing about the dinner and stuff? You all can have dinner.
We'll have it at noon.
I can't even have dinner.
So we're having our Thanksgiving dinner at noon on the nineteenth and the meeting will be at six.
All right. So I move we adjourn until, uh, six PM on the nineteenth, uh, no, no. All right, we're adjourned.